It's a little past 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, March 14th. Let the record show that we do have quorum. Commissioner Arza and Commissioner Sainz being absent. If everyone would please rise for the pleasure allegiance. I'd like to welcome all of you this morning and thank you all for being here. First item is "The Minutes." You do have a copy of "The Minutes" before you. Is there a motion to approve?
I give some move.
Second. Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is Claims. Ms. Guerra?
(inaudible)
Move to pass.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, I see some people from out of town. If you'd like to go first, we can certainly take your. If you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, it's up to you.
(inaudible)
What item number are you?
Item number one.
Okay. Okay, this is item number six. It's an action item. It's on a proclamation for tuberculosis awareness day. Yes, ma'am. Use the podium for audio for our cameras.
Okay. So, I'm very honored. I'm Melissa Davis. I'm the TB program manager, and I'm very honored to be here today and talk to you about the importance of recognizing tuberculosis. And March 24th is World Tuberculosis Disease Day, World TB Day. So TB is still the number-one infectious disease in the world. It kills more than 2 million people each year. And here in Starr County, we have a rate, we have six TB cases, and we have a rate of 9.5 percent for 100,000 populations. And that's double the state rate. The state rate is 4.5. It's triple the national rate. The national rate is about 2.1. So we do have a lot of TB here in Starr County. And we also have a lot of TB. Our border, our Mexican partners, Grupo San Fronteros, took care of over 57 TB cases with at least 20 multi-drug resistance. And as we know, there's no real border between us and Mexico, so diseases know no border. So TB is an issue. TB is normally spread when somebody has a disease and they cough or they sting, and you spend a lot of time with the person. And then, the good news is TB is 100 percent curable, and so we offer free TB services at our field office, the Regretted City Field Office. And I have here in the audience Alisa Tardana and Julia Lara, who work in the field office, and they provide free TB services. So if anyone has questions, concerns about TB, it's free of charge, call our office. TB is curable, and we need to put a lot of importance, and we can cure TB if we all work together.
Well, we certainly thank you for taking time to come before the court, and we are very aware that it's a very, I guess, infectious disease, and we're very concerned also, like you mentioned, on account of the border. I've gotten reports where people come and they're diagnosed with possibility of TB, and before you know it, they leave, back in Mexico. And this has always been a problem, so we thank you for doing something about it, and, you know, hopefully, we can control that. I see representatives from Mexico also, so that's very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve proclaiming March 14th as tuberculosis awareness day.
A motion?
I have a motion. Moved in second. Discussion. All in fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. (applause) We can take it now in case some of them need to leave. We'll go ahead and follow our regular agenda under Reports. Gas department?
(inaudible)
And the transfer station?
(inaudible)
Okay.
Good morning, Your Honor and Commissioners. I don't have anything written for you all today, but on Friday, TCQ went and inspected our transfer station, and they ordered us to cease all tire acceptance. For now, we cannot accept any tires from anyone due to the fact that they claim that our permit does not allow it. We didn't want to argue with them. We went ahead and ceased acceptance. We're going to look into it. Mr. Gilbert Guerra's going to help us. If we need to amend our permit, we'll do that. But at the present time, the transfer station had to cease acceptance of tires.
You know, and this is really, really weird, because as Ms. Guerra was informing me Friday, I guess it was...
It was Friday afternoon, yes, sir.
TCQ, who is the one that's saying our permit is not for tires, were the ones who funded the tire cutter. They gave us money to buy a tire cutter for our transfer station, and now they say we cannot accept tires. So sometimes it seems like their left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing, but in the meantime, we just need to wait until we clear this thing, and hopefully, it'll be quick and nothing will come from it. But they control the purse, so they control us.
They control it, so I couldn't fight it until we look into it and just make the necessary amendments or whatever to our permit, so that they can... And they said that they would try to speed it up, but in the meantime, just so that you all can know, we cannot accept tires from anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Tax assessor, Mr. Cantú?
Good morning. Good morning. (inaudible) First of all, before starting, I'd like to officially thank you for the courtesy that you gave me a couple of months ago when I was named interim tax collector. I will continue to do my job until this term expires. The report that I have for you before you is not the standard report that used to be presented by the Tax Office previously as a result of the fact that we were not able to capture or find any of our old documentation. So what I've done at this point is given you a synopsis of what it is that the court has done insofar as collections and disbursements of funds. Being that there is no way at this point that I can still accurately determine, you know, what amounts are out there, what I did was, working with the county auditor, I decided that I would do disbursements based on historical figures and only advancing 90 percent of that amount. The reason that I chose not to go with the exact amount was the fact that I did not want to get caught with the situation that I was dispensing Starr County funds to the city of Escovadas or South Texas College funds to the hospital. So I'd rather be conservative and withhold part of that money than to be accused or charged of having sent Starr County money to South Texas College, et cetera. So I'm not going to go over the details, but the first section of the report basically discusses the four disbursements that have been made to date. Another disbursement will be made this week, because we do have monies in the bank, and that will be done. Again, I'm not going to burden you with these specific amounts. You can review that on your own. I would like to say that to Starr County, from the time that I came in, we've dispersed $2.5 million to the county, and prior to my coming in, $1.5 million was dispersed by the prior interim tax collector. So money has been flowing into the treasury of the county. Like I said, conservatively, we've done this. It's been $2.5 million that have been submitted to the county, not $750,000 as the treasurer has claimed. And regarding another issue that the county treasurer made, that as a result of me not dispersing monies, the county had not been able to take care of an $800,000 transfer station situation. That had nothing to do with the tax collector's business. That was just a resolution that the county felt that they were going to take to take care of the $800,000 matter with the tax office.
If I can shed some light on that, Mr. Cantú. If I remember correctly, what the treasurer said was that an $800,000 loan had been requested to meet payroll.
Yes.
Which is totally false. The $800,000 loan was requested because, according to the treasurer, I did not take blame for it. Did not have a line item in the budget to pay for it, so that therefore, he wouldn't pay it, which made the bank very happy, you know, because now we pay another year of interest. That's the reason it happened. Had nothing to do with payroll, had nothing to do with anything. It had... Everything was that it was not a line item on the budget to pay for it. I'm sorry.
I thank you for that better clarification on the matter, but it had nothing to do with what is happening, what has happened with the tax collector's office. Like I said, a fifth round of disbursements to all parties will be made this week. At the close of business Friday, March 11th, the general account of the tax office had $2,861,977.88 available for disbursements. Again, I will do a conservative disbursement, you know, and basically allocate 90 percent of what all the entities got the previous month. It appears that we do have a breakthrough in being able to access the records that I have been asking for, and so I'm hoping that this week we'll be able to start on reconciling the reports. That means that by April, I feel that we will have current reports to be able to get to the entities and get back on par as to, you know, how the reimbursements are going to be made. One last thing that I would like the Commissioners' Court and the residents of Starr County to be wary about. Another public official, the same public official that we're talking about, mentioned in a recent newspaper article that $10 million has not been allocated. I don't know what he's talking about.[788.73][788.73](laughing) There is no $10 million in the bank. I will not allocate any money that is not in the bank. Like I said, we have $2.8 million in the bank right now, and that's because last week, $650,000 were collected. So where the county treasurer says that there's $10 million that has not been allocated, I do not know. A separate supplement that I did was more a little bit that I'm providing to you is to advise you that we have the main office and the two substations operating. I've given you a breakdown of what our staffing is. There's a total of 10 people working at the offices paid by the tax office. We have an additional employee in Roma that is paid by the Commissioners' budget, and we are pending the addition of one person in the La Victoria area that will be paid by the Commissioners' budget. I'd like to commend the staff for the work that they've done. It's been hectic, the months that I've been there, the 60 days that I've been there. They take a lot of flak from people. They are insulting. They are demeaning. They have... And I think it's part of this Donald Trump thing that's going on. Yes, I mean, they think they can bully people. They try to use the excuse of what happened in the past to try and shirk their responsibility to pay their taxes, or the fact that they don't have their paperwork in order. I am impressed by the amount of... The temperance that our staff has. People from the regional office of DMV has been there, and they have told my staff, refuse service to them. You have no... They have no right to attack and abuse you, but the staff takes it, you know. A famous word in that office continues to be bola de ratas, you know, and I take offense to that. All of the people that are there, for the exception of two people, are new people. They have nothing to do with what happened in the past, and so I would just like for the Commissioners' Court to know that it isn't right, you know, for these people to take, you know, take it out on people that have nothing to do with what happened in the past, and something that still has to be adjudicated. So again, the problem is, DMV regulations have changed. You can now no longer send your son to get your license plates. If you're going to send your son to pick up your license plate, you need to give him a letter and a copy of your driver's license. If something is wrong in your registration, we will not process it. Perhaps in the past, because we knew each other, we did it. I'm happy to say that our staff is no longer doing those things. We are continuing to follow up with businesses that are sending suspicious business to our office, and we are reporting those to the county. Because, you know, even though our county faced a black guy and took a black guy with what happened, there's always two parties to when things happen. And so my responsibility during the time that I will be in this office is to make sure that if there is a... There is a second party to anything that was done wrong, that we point that out, and that proper authorities are also notified about that. So again, hopefully by April, we'll have the basic report, which will give us a very specific breakdown. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No one, just a comment about the staff, and please tell them that the court is very appreciative for what they're doing. It has been hectic, but we'll get through it.
Yes, sir.
So tell them, thank you very much.
We will. All right.
Thank you. Treasurer?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners. Revenues for the month of February 2016, $157,563.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
County clerk, Mr. Ron Suddles? Any questions on the clerk's report?
Thank you, Mr. Ron Suddles.
International bridge, Commissioner?
Okay, total revenue from traffic for the month of February 2016 was $203,431.50. We show an increase of $28,930 for the month of February 2016 compared to the month of February 2015. So it's getting better. We show an increase of $3,067 on collections for the month of February 2016 compared to the month of January 2016. Rent receipts were $850, currency exchange excess $136.37, Border Patrol deported aliens zero. Total other collections was $986.37. Total traffic collections, $2,003, $431.50 for a grand total collection for the month of February 2016 of $204,417.87.
It has been improving.
Is that more or less what we had budgeted?
Yes, yes. It's probably a little better than what I had budgeted. It comes out to about $2.5, and I think I budgeted $2.2 or something like that.
So... It got better.
Yes. Any other question, comment? Thank you, Commissioner. Elections administrator, Mr. Matelmo?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My pleasure.
Do it again.
Bring it.
This is an agenda item, right?
Yes, it's also an agenda. I'm not going to talk about so much, but just give the results. The reason I... If you look at page two, we indicate to you what the canvassing was for 2016, the primary election. And we ended up with 12,000 votes, 843. Recently, Friday, we had a recount, and of those, there was a minor change of one additional vote for Abel Cantú and one additional vote for Emilio Alvarez. What happened there, basically, the... You get an over and under. When the ballot goes in and you voted, but you missed one, it won't count. Or if the ballot went in and it votes for everyone, but you didn't check it dark enough, it'll skip it and count the others. And again, when the machine goes in, it'll tell you. If it finds that there's something short, it'll say, "Do you want to look at the ballot?" And you hit approve, and it'll run the ballot in. In this particular case, the board, while they were counting each ballot, found that some had a very light check mark and didn't count it, and there was two votes that were like that in two different bins. So overall, for Jaime Alvarez, everything stayed the same. So the machines were pretty accurate.
What about the ballots that had come in late, the mailings?
The mailings who come in late, the board threw them out because they weren't post-dated marked the proper date.
Okay.
And the state told us that we couldn't count them out.
Okay, I thought they had been postmarked correctly or with a proper date.
My understanding, when I spoke to John, because I got here Friday at late, that the state had indicated that they were late, they're late.
How many were there?
I'd say about five.
There weren't very many, yeah. There were just a few.
And that's another thing, right now, what I'm reviewing. Number one, the total mailouts that went out, I'm real concerned, not concerned, but I'm looking into the ballots, the ones that were not be able to deliver, like, where did they go then? If you couldn't deliver, would you send them back to us? And the addresses have been there for the last 20 years. Where... Why didn't they get delivered?
Were they sent back or no?
Yeah, they were sent back. And then, there was another one, that the husband got one, but the wife didn't. So... And they were undeliverable. Thus, well, these are the questions that I have to the postmaster, and once I get the data, I will send to them. These did... People did... Most of them did come in vocally physically, but because of the court order to lock those things, I can't get in to dig and see what's going to happen. I did review all the computer printout of all the mailings. There are some minor issues, but they're all questionable. There's nothing concrete. There was one address that had like 10 names, mailings.
Well, there wasn't one. There were several of those, and I saw them.
But the thing is, there can be five, but they've all had this last name.
Yeah, but when you have 25 in the same household, that's not correct.
Yeah.
Are they going to take a shower? Everybody in the shower?
I didn't see any.
At the same time?
I didn't see that many in any of them.
No, you see a lot of me, I thought, and I've got the list.
Well, I would appreciate your help then, because what I saw, there were some that can, but the ones that are five and three and fours, and they all have a last name, I mean, there's nothing you can do about it. But what I'm doing now, I'm breaking up the summary sheet, and I will provide the whole list.
Let me ask you a question, Chairman. On the... Those mailings or mailouts, what areas were the worlds most affected? Rio Grande, La Grulla, Roma? Which one?
It would have probably been Roma. I think precincts six and three were the biggest ones.
Well, I think all that needs to be reported to the Attorney General.
Yes, and it will be.
As a postmaster general, we need to report it.
Yeah, to see why the mail took so long. And as I was talking to John...
Because it's very easy, you know. We start thinking a lot of things. Because if you're there and they come in, and you can put them on the side and keep them there.
This is one thing that, you know...
Makes you wonder.
Yeah, well, I often... The mailing system, I know there's a purpose for it, but this year, more than any other year, I got calls from serious citizens and coming to my office.
There's a purpose for everything.
Yep.
Remember that.
And then when we looked at these things, I remember, if you remember way back when I first became election administrator, we were getting 50, 60, 75 mailings to addresses in McAllen, and those people all got indicted. The frustrating thing was, when I saw it, I reported it, and you know what they told me? Send it. You don't know... They told me, "You do not know the intent of the voter, or the voter allowed it, so you send it." It is not a crime unless they use the ballot. If someone else uses the ballots besides them, then it's a crime. If nobody uses that ballot, it's not a crime. And that's why, you know, that's one of the things in the system that I feel that the mailings are really in bad order. But again, that's the state law. So again, you know, and then they told me...
As long as everything gets reported, we'll let the state take care of that.
But I will report everything and all the addresses, and then we'll see what happens from that point. But again, I need to get into the boxes.
Look at the problem there. Most of the problem is in precinct three, Roma.
Six. Prison six.
Well, precinct six, yeah. Precinct six, not three, six, I'm sorry. Precinct Roma. 36th, because they all go to Roma. That's Escovadas and Roma.
Yeah.
And those were the things, aren't they? A lot of people were indicating that, well, there's not very many voters in Escovadas. There's a lot of voters in Escovadas. It carries a big area. It's like 2,000 voters in those particular precincts that covers Escovada. But anyway, at the end of the day, these things will be reviewed and will be brought up. I assure you, I have no intent of just saying, okay, the election's over and showing it, because of all the elderly that called me.
And I think you should, because there's a lot of questions there.
Yes, sir.
And why only that area? Why not La Grulla? Why not Rio Grande City? It's over there.
Yeah.
So it makes you wonder, and there's a lot of questions that pop into your head. What's happened?
And I already received, like, four complaints, written complaints, official complaints, and I already forwarded them out. And, you know, I didn't want them to think I was holding things back, so I said, "You bring me the official complaint with the statements, and I would be more glad to, you know, process them and get them out of here." So I sent the letter to the state with all the different... There were those four different complaints, or five, and I sent straight to the state, and they got them. And they still got... I told them, "I still have mine. The only thing I'm going to do, that I want to do, I'm going to get the mailings, and I'm going to get the envelopes and see who assisted. Then I'll have the person who assisted them and the statement from the elderly saying that we didn't even get to see our ballot. Then you put those together, now you have some evidence."
Because there were some of those out there.
Yes, sir.
They took the ballots out of the people's hands.
Well, sometimes they would just walk in.
That's totally wrong.
Again, this is only one case, because that's all I got reported. They walked in, they said, "Sign here," and the elderly signed, and they took them. They didn't even see the ballot. So these issues will be brought up. I think it's... To take someone my age or younger people and convince them to sign, well, that's one thing, but an elderly, 70, 80 years old, that can barely read and write, and you're just telling them to sign, I think that's kind of... and you just tell them to sign, I think that's kind of gotcha. And I'm perfect. Anyway, that's where we stand right now. We're going to have another recount. I suspect that recount, since it's going to be a county-wide recount, I expect it to take from eight to one o'clock in the morning, easy. It's fourteen thousand votes we have to vote. I think the last one, Commissioner Cantú was there, he took them to.
Eight to eight?
Eight to eight, yeah. So it should be interesting. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, sir.
Federal and state programs? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to table items A, B, and I.
I do so move.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, no, and eleven, our budget amendments. Ms. Hill, do you have an order?
Move to pass, second.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twelve is an action item, and this is a resolution to extend the hours of operation for our amusement machines. Currently, we have from, on weekdays, from ten to twelve midnight, and they've been requesting, because Hidalgo County has them till two o'clock in the morning every day, that we extend it to two o'clock every day, so that's, that's a request that we extend. We already have from Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, they can operate till two.
But then on the weekdays, only till twelve.
Till twelve, yeah, and then we'll go.
So we'll extend it to two o'clock in the morning?
Two more hours, yeah.
Move to pass, second.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirteen is a loan request from General Fund to pay PO one hundred to twenty-six to JNF Crenching. This is a reimbursement part of it. It's a hundred and fifty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-six.
Move to pass, second.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Of course, this is one, and if, you know, we have the money and the treasury. Fourteen is to approve modification number one to the Olmito García Site Seven rehab in the amount of a hundred and twenty-one thousand six seventy-two. Is this going to be an additional hundred and twenty-one thousand?
There is, because you have the number one, however, you know, now that affects us.
Okay, so this is from, okay, this is from the feds. Okay.
Move to pass, second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And item fifteen, I guess this is also an advance for seven thousand nine forty-one to R and J contract in the Olmito Site Seven. This is also a reimbursement.
Move to pass, second.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item sixteen is an action item, and this to contract Patito Brown and Hill to conduct the audit for the year ending September thirtieth, 2015, for the International Bridge.
They've been doing a good job, Judge, so I move to pass.
That's the same name?
The same.
Same.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item seventeen is also contracting with them, Patito Brown and Hill, to conduct the audit for the county for September thirtieth, 2015.
Move to pass, second.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eighteen is to approve the compensation for the election workers that just sent out that Mr. Montalvo gave us. It's in the amount of twenty-six thousand nine forty-six sixty.
Move to pass, second.
Moved in second. Honorable fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item nineteen is to approve the canvassing report for the 2016 primary election. The results are also shown in this report.
There's a recount of.
That's right.
If they have a recant, when we recount, they'll go back and have a recant. But we have to have it, we have to have it like that.
If there's any changes, then we do it again?
Yes, sir.
For the DA's.
Yeah, they're changing, they're changing, but they have to have it.
Okay, this recount for the DA's office, is this only Starr County, or does it involve Duval and Jim Hogg?
All of them.
Oh, okay. And what are they going to do, do you know?
I have no idea.
Okay.
We, 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 we,[1593.04]